Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our regular meeting scheduled March 28, 2022. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will look for a motion to approve the agenda. You've all been presented with your tonight's agenda in the last few days.
Mayor, I'd like to make two changes to the agenda. I'd like to move item four J to the regular agenda and add another item, consider promotion to sergeant.
Which which agenda item is that? I don't see it.
It's it's a new one.
It was one that was sent out via email as a green sheet item that we'll just add to the end of the regular agenda.
Okay, okay, very good. So you want to make that motion then?
Yes.
Okay, motion to approve the agenda, moving item four J to the regular agenda and also the, is it a police hire?
No, it's promoting.
Promoting from internal promotion from police officer to sergeant.
The internal promotion with the police department will move that to the regular agenda also. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got it. Councilmember Schleeder, Councilmember Sullivan, thank you. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. The items will be in Mac, will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. In which event, the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. At this time, we'll have our city administrator, Mr. Krugel, review these items with us.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Kirby, members of city council. Tonight, we have three meeting minutes. So one from our work session on March 14th, one from our regular meeting on March 14th, and then our our planning retreat on March 22nd. We have dispersment approvals through March 28, 2022. Those dispersments totaled $645,000. Items of note are our AMI meter lease, so the the water meters that were installed a few years ago. Part of our AMI network. We have payment to Bolton and Mank for engineering on our high zone redundant water line. Kinetic leasing for the vector trucks, so the wastewater vector truck that you see out and about. Magni Construction for well number eight pay app. That was for 75, just under $75,000. Midwest Fire tanker chassis that was approved, I believe, in 2021. We finally, they received it. So now we have to pay for it. We should see that water truck or that tanker here at the city probably around July, June, July-ish, hopefully. We had our sales tax that we paid to the state of Minnesota and then Kasah 36 materials for electric. Those are dispersments. The next item we have are accept bids and award bid or accept bids and award a bid for airfield pavement management projects. So that's out at the airport. Next, we have accept bids and award bid for the North Taxi Lane construction project. Those are items that both of which are at least 90% covered through FAA dollars. Item G, maybe even more with some of the ARPA and care ARPA money that's out there. Item G, approved pay application number six for Magni Construction. That's for the well number eight. Kasah 36 Improvement Project Cost Participation Agreement. This is a just a an agreement that outlines terms between the county and the city. The community garden contract. So this is the one at the old Presbyterian Church. There will be a community garden out there this year. Item J has been removed to regular agenda. Item K is a community garden contract with Word of Life Church. Now, this is off of Kingsway. This is potentially for a new community garden. This wouldn't be until 2023 if the grants come through and and everything kind of lines up. You'll see a new community garden over there by Word of Life Church. You have a couple Main Street closure applications. So Max Green Mill and then the fire department are going to hold dances on Main Street this summer. And then the termination of agreement with utility services, Service Warranties of America. So the ever confusing letter that gets sent out every few times a year that has the city logo on it. We're requesting termination. There's a six month notice period for that. So they would still be able to market in the city until September, but this would basically get rid of that. We receive a lot of, there's a lot of confused residents that reach out to the city about, hey, is this spam? Is this fake? You know, really, it's an agreement that we have, but they just use our logo. It's kind of a interesting marketing model, but this would terminate that agreement effective sometime in September of, or September 28 of 2020. Two. So that's all I have for consent agenda. I'll entertain any questions.
Help the agenda tonight. Anybody have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Huntington.
Second.
Mr. Sullivan, thank you. The other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to public comment. Public comment provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Persons wishing to make a comment must sign in in advance on the sheet on the provided and then identify themselves by providing their name and address. At this time, do we have anybody that'd like to share with us with public comment?
We do have a couple individuals. We have Andrea Carles from 617 North Second Street. Believe that's not related to an item on the agenda. And then we have Jim Fox, Gail Fox. I believe it's for item six B, which that'd be appropriate to speak at that time. So I think Andrea Carl is up.
Will be me, actually.
Okay, Andrew.
Good evening.
Evening, gentlemen. So I'm just trying to, I'm just coming down here now that we've had the thaw that come through the, that came through and all the snow and everything's melted on to bring attention to the city council that the condition of North Second Street on the 600 block between Grove Street and Elm Street is in some pretty rough shape. I mean, it was it was in pretty rough shape when the rest of Second Street was redone. And it's only continued to deteriorate, and there hasn't been a whole lot of repair done to it. I live down there. There's several other families that live down there and use that street regularly. There's a lot of people that walk up and down Second Street every day, and there's a massive amount of commercial truck traffic that goes on that that street between for the service agripure and the service other agripure facilities and then other parts of the town. And I I would like to see it addressed. I think it's, I think it's not necessarily necessary to that it be addressed immediately, and I'm not trying to make any hard accusations, but it is in really rough shape. And we don't have a, we don't have adequate drainage on that street. The pavement is in very poor condition. There's parts of the road that just aren't even there anymore, namely right in front of my house. There's about a, there's about a 15 foot stretch about two feet out from the curb that is just dirt. And it's getting worse every day. And I would, I would like to bring that to it, to the city council, just to make sure that you guys address that sometime. Man, I don't have any time. I don't really know how the accusation process works around here. I don't fill out the paperwork. So I, but I would like to see that addressed sometime within the next three to four months, at least a process started to get that fixed. I'd appreciate it, and I thank you for your time.
Mr. Carles, have you contacted the city before you talked to the council or have you been contacted at all?
I just got a request tracker notification before the meeting. So
Okay.
Um, and if I may.
Yes.
Um, this is actually slated for a full reconstruction in 2024 or 2025. I know that's not three months away. But we will let our public works manager know to look at it, and maybe there's some short term things we can do. Obviously, there's some things in that area that we're not investing in that road because there's, you know, conversations with the business about, you know, possibly expanding in that area. So but we we have it slated in our our fire 10 year pavement management plan to be reconstructed because there's water main underneath that road as well. So that needs to be repaired or replaced. So we'll, we'll definitely let the public works manager know, and he can take a look at it and maybe come up with a good solution that's cost effective.
Fair enough. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Carles. Anybody else at this time? What foxes will reserve for last?
Yeah, correct. Yeah. If that's all right, if you speak during the agenda item. Okay.
Very good. Moving on to agenda item six zero eight, or that was six A, is it not? Wolf Street variance consideration. At this time, I'll let you review some of the information on that, Mr. Krugel.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Kirby, members of council. There has been a variance request from Cywak Lumber, who owned the property at 608 Wolf Street. They're they're constructing a warehouse. They've received a building permit for this warehouse. The plans that they've submitted for the building permit show a material that, for exterior material that meets the code currently. What the variance is requesting is that there that we move from, that we allow them to use 0% non metal or 100% metal. Sometimes I get lost in those kind of terminology. So it's, they're requesting a 100% metal building. The current zoning code for I-1 requires 75% non metal finishes. So that can be series of wood, brick, something just other than metal. There's a, there's a list of items, but it's up to the zoning administrator as far as that goes. On March 10th, the Planning Commission recommended the resolution that you see in the packet. In that resolution, you'll see some findings of fact. We'll talk a little bit about those moving forward. So some considerations to think about as a, as a final say in this variance is the I one zoning district, which is light industrial. There's, there's various districts around the city, and I have a couple slides here showing where those districts are. So why that's important is because a variance that is approved in this district, even though it's in a kind of a different area than some of the others. It it transcends all of the districts. So if somebody would like to come and apply for a variance for 0% or 100% metal. They would be able to do so, and then there's now precedent if this is approved for that variance to be approved. So you're effectively amending the code through variance by potentially approving this. So the findings of fact in the resolution could open up variance requests for other items using the same or similar findings of fact. So if you've looked at the findings of fact, you know, and and Councilmember Kroghman's on the Planning Commission, I've talked to the the Planning Commission Chair offline about this. Really, they're, they have an intent to want to approve this, right? But the findings of fact, there's very specific language that you need to meet the criteria of in our city code in order for the variance to be approved. You know, I don't want to really say it's it's some of the variances, the language in there are kind of a stretch. And then the idea is that those could be used for future variants, variant requests in other zoning districts. So something of the nature of, well, there's a bunch of, you know, 10,000 square foot accessory buildings right by me. You know, you guys don't allow that right now, but because they're around me. I can use that that findings of fact. You know, some of those things that you have to keep in mind, you know, when you approve these things. So it doesn't necessarily just affect the I one district. It affects all other variance requests because really those findings of fact need to be really tight. So that's a couple of considerations. I'll kind of show some areas. So I-1 zoning areas you can see is the the pink. I believe it's pink in color. You know, that's the I-1. That's the area that we're talking about. Let's see if this thing works here. So his property that he's looking at, that we're talking about is right about there. So right below that little sliver, that's the Cywak property. So right in the middle of that I-1 zoning area. Another area is along Commerce Street. So there's some I-1 scattered throughout that area. And I believe it's Dakota as well. So there's some I-1 up there and then.
Jasper, could you go back up that one? Give us a reference point such as the old Green Giant warehouse.
Yes, so. And let me get my bearings here. I'm trying to get my bearings here. As far as the by meter, you're trying to talk about the by meter, right?
Meter or opposite what used to be
Yep.
affectionately called the P Palace.
Yep. So the by meter is right in this area, I believe, right here. It looks, sorry, right there. Yep. And then the P Palace is, I believe, right here. So it's right on the fringe there. So the by meter, if you're familiar with that warehouse, is right here. All along Commerce Street, you have some light industrial areas. And then lastly, the the EDA land has some areas zoned I-1, and then there's a sliver kind of by Cambria that's also zoned I-1. So we have I-1 all over the the city. You know, effectively, if this variance is approved in this manner with the findings of fact, you could have pole or post frame construction buildings that are 100% steel. So I just want to make sure that's clear with the group because you kind of have at least two options. It could vary from there. So I'll kind of go through those options that that are presented tonight. So there's a resolution that's been crafted by our planner Nate Sparks that would approve this variant. So that's resolution 2022 dash zero 18. That's included in the packet, and that allows for 100% metal or 0% non metal at that warehouse in on 608 Water Street. The other option is to deny the variance request citing a disagreement with the conformance of the comprehensive plan because really, if you look at this, this doesn't conform with the comprehensive plan. It says it does. So that's the, that's one of the findings of fact that you could say it doesn't, you don't agree with. It's probably the easiest one to to look at as far as justifying it. Now, the other, I think, four the end probably are, you know, opinionated. If you if you feel that way, you could use those as well. But then you could send this back to the Planning Commission to consider updating the performance standards to to some city council directed ratio. So this is just an example. This isn't a recommendation, but you could say Planning Commission, we're going to deny this variance, but we want this property to move forward with some change in the code. An example of that could be 75% on the front, 0% on the sides, or you could do 50% on the front, 25% on the sides, you know, something like that. That's maybe a compromise between the zero and the 75 that we currently have. That's all up to city council. I would recommend giving the Planning Commission some sort of direction. So they're just not kind of trying to figure that out. Our liaison might have some additional input. And then what we're just looking for tonight is action to consider the Planning Commission request. So you have those two options. You can approve it, or you can do some sort of denial and send it back. That would be an option. At this time, you could also, I guess you could approve it, but change some of the standards. Technically, it's a little messier than actually updating the performance standards in the code, but so I wouldn't recommend that because that's still unclear. You know, the timeframe between now and then, what actually happens in the code. So I'll entertain any questions. It is somewhat complicated. You know, you don't know, you don't get a lot of Planning Commission requests that you're getting an option to deny it. But, you know, really, and I told the Planning Commission this was city council has to feel comfortable with the findings of fact in the resolution. If they don't, they might not approve it. So really, it's important that that the group, and I can read those off to the group if they would like. I don't have them up here. I apologize for that. So but they are in the packet in the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak to this?
Yeah, please do.
Yeah, to be clear, Jasper mentioned liaison. I'm the liaison to the Planning Commission, not a voting member. I think I can fairly represent that they were, they were trying their best to find a way to justify doing this. You can read it and figure it out. This is not something that is on Elmwood. It's out in that area by by the lumberyard. But it's on a backstreet. And by the way, there's an error there on the slide. On the left, it calls it Water Street. On the right, it's Wolf. It is Wolf Street. That's minor, but we're talking about Wolf Street. The buildings that are next to that now in that area are all metal. But they are there from prior being allowed under the prior code. So it it seems like this would be just like the others. I don't, I'm not here to represent Cywak Lumber, but one of their concerns was that if you have a building that's all metal, you can easily repair it if a piece of equipment hits it. Whereas if it's a different type of material, it's costly, is harder to to repair. My answer to that is simply put some posts up to stop people from running into your building. Okay, but I understand what they want. I'm going to speak to it right now. I think it would be appropriate to send this back to the Planning Commission and figure out a way to have, for example, a building can have. I got to get this right, Jasper, like you. I get confused. 25% of it would have to be non metal. Right now, it's 75%, correct?
That is correct. So so 75% of the building on all sides, the front, the sides, the rear.
25%, one side could be non metal. One, yeah, one side would have to be non metal. The others could be because that's, or you could proportion it on each of the sides, assuming you had a four sided building. I had a friend that had an octagonal building once, so I'm careful what I say. But this is a tricky thing. Now, Jasper, the one question I mentioned to you this morning, I wanted answered is if we send it back to the Planning Commission, what's the timing? What's the process? So we understand what we're doing.
Yeah.
We, I'm saying, we want to try to work with this company. They're a major company that's serving our community, but we also want to keep our standards for our community. So go ahead, please.
Yeah, um, I can address that. So the Planning Commission meets every second Thursday. So potentially, this could go to them on the second Thursday. If there's direction from city council, that would be
April 14.
April 14. And then that could potentially be on the agenda for an approval where it would be an ordinance first reading. And then in the first meeting in May would be the second second reading of the ordinance, and then seven days after that, it would go into effect technically. So this could all be approved if all goes well, you know, by mid May. So as far as construction timelines, I'm not sure as far as what their timeline is to be able to get this done. I think they want to get going this spring, right? The footings have been dug. They've, they've already got a permit, right? And they're already, they can, they can proceed as they feel fit, but what they're trying to do is change that exterior material to something different. So you know, and I think Councilmember Kroghman, I don't know if that was a recommendation that you just have 25% of the entire building cumulatively needs to be non metal, and then you can leave it up to the the builder to do what they want, and that's just something that's approved through the zoning administrator. In code, it's documented in code, but if if that's the language, that could be the language. Right now, it's just 75% of the entire building. Needs to be, needs to be metal. So.
I'm a little reluctant to make a specific recommendation till we address the major issue, which is do we grant the resolution or do we defer? We can always agree we're going to send it back to the Planning Commission as one step, and then later tonight decide what we want to recommend. But the big issue is looking at the resolution versus getting a new ordinance. I want to be clear, if I can, Jasper, if we send this back to the Planning Commission, our anticipation would be that at their next meeting, they could come forth with a recommended ordinance change, basically, and ordinance amendment that we could then consider at the meeting after that for us, and we'd have to read it once or waive the reading and then have a second meeting to be able to pass something if we want to.
That's correct. Yeah. And at that April 14th meeting, the Planning Commission would hold a public hearing on that proposed ordinance change. And we have enough time to notice that in the paper. But the item, the issue at hand tonight is you need to take action on the variance request. So you need to, you need to either approve it or deny it. That should be one motion. And then if there's another motion, let's say if you prove it, we're done. If you deny it, then, you know, another motion to give Planning Commission some direction would be appropriate.
By the way, if I might, we could just stick with the ordinance as is and deny the resolution or deny the variance that I'm not advocating one way or the other. I'm just pointing that out. If I may, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I appreciate you.
You want to make a, you want to make them?
I don't right now. I think other members may want to comment.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to say I'm not comfortable with the findings or with granting the variance. I leaning towards what Noel suggested.
Okay, Mr. Sullivan, anything? Do you want to go ahead and make a motion then?
I would, I would move that we deny the variance request.
Second.
Motion's been made, didn't it? Deny the request. It's been seconded by Mr. Sullivan. Motion is being made by Councilmember Kroghman. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those.
No, is that just a straight out denial? Or are we going to be sending this back to them after we denied?
That's a separate motion.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Ayes have it. Second motion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would move that we send this matter back to the Planning Commission. Ask them to expedite the processing and come up with a propose, was proposed changes to the ordinance to include allowing up to 25%. I got to get this straight. Help me out, dude.
You could say.
To make it, the requirement is that at least 75% be non metal. Other way around.
Other way around. So you could say it a couple ways. You could say it could be up to 25% metal or 75% non metal.
Let's leave it up to.
Or sorry, 25% total non metal for the entire structure is what you're looking for.
Correct.
I'm not going to repeat that motion.
No.
Okay. You want to, do you want to translate what all that?
Basically, I I'm moving that we send it back to the Planning Commission.
Very good.
Ask them to come up with a proposed ordinance in an expedited fashion and send it back to us, and that it then would be, and I'll have Jasper fill in the blank with the percentage.
Yep. And the way it'll read, actually, it's actually pretty clean, is that the 75 will just be changed to 25. So right now, we require 75% non metal. We would require 25% non metal.
And that's, by the way, if I may, that would be the motion. Maybe if they had a second.
I will second.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilmember Kroghman. It's been seconded by Councilmember Sullivan. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
Real quickly, this is simply a recommendation to the Plan Commission. They've got their responsibility to do what their role is, but this is our initial recommendation to them.
Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to regular agenda, item six B, 419 Country View Land Civil Injunction Authorization Resolution that's regarding the foxes. So Mr. Kroghman or Krugel, thank you. Kroghman Krugel. Thank you.
Um, so I can kind of give just an update about this. I know we talked about this at the at the work session. And then I know we have an individual or two here for public comment. You know, we can, we can do that, then kind of the information is out there. And then, and then we're looking for action. So what we have here, so we've issued on this property, three administrative citations. Those have been included in the packet for reference. Staff visited the site on March 25th to evaluate compliance with those citations or at least one aspect of those. Talking with legal counsel, so Mike Corey, our city attorney. They're recommending, because there isn't much movement, there hasn't been an indication of path forward to compliance per the citations that the next logical step is to move forward with a civil injunction as described at the work session. And in order to authorize that, what you see in your packet is a resolution that authorizes Mike Corey, our legal counsel, to pursue that in hopes of both building code and or state building code and city code compliance at that property at 419 Country View Lane. So that's what's on the table before you today. And it's up to you, Mayor. Now, that that's all I have for my presentation.
Before I invite the foxes up, does anybody have a question for our city administrator, Mr. Krugel? Before we proceed, okay. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Jim Fox. You have your wife, you have your wife Gail with you. Thank you. If you, if you'd like to visit for a little bit, go ahead and.
Thank you, members of the council for letting us speak this evening. My name is Gail Lockmiller-Fox. Here with me tonight is my husband, Jim. I have lived in the Thur area since 1976, and I've owned and operated a business in the downtown area since 1978. Jim has lived here since 2004. At this time, I'm going to be reading this on behalf of my husband, Jim. I am here to ask that my wife and I be treated fairly. I am also hoping for a realistic solution, which brings my property into compliance with the city code with a minimum of headache and expense to the city and my wife and myself. I want to start with violation four, placing a pool without a permit. I admit that we did place the pool without a permit. I offer the following as an explanation, not as an excuse. Ordering materials for a pool and planning installation requires planning ahead. We planned this project long before contacting the city. We did not then know. We did not then know what a challenge it would be to get a permit. On May nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, we were told that we could not get a permit for the pool until the certificate of occupancy was issued. By then, I already believed that the certificate of occupancy was already being withheld unfairly. I will discuss why I thought that later. Also, by then, the pool materials had been ordered. Due to the strain on material from the COVID shutdowns, I did not want to miss my opportunity to buy and install the pool. I also did not want our materials to be left out in the elements while I awaited for the inspection to issue a COO inspector, excuse me. By this time, I was very stressed, frustrated with the city's inspector, and I decided to go ahead for that. I am sorry, and I expect to pay the fine. But I believe that the pool and many violations about the pool show how the city's inspector is treating me unfairly and enforcing the city code incorrectly. Violation five says that the pool and deck are illegally are illegal because section one, three, five, point zero, four, six, if the city zoning ordinance prohibits pools and decks in the front yard. First of all, the pool and deck are not in my front yard. They are in my backyard. This is obvious to anyone who has seen the property. My property at four nineteen Country View, my property faces Country View. Country View is to the west, and the pool and the deck are to the northeast side of the house. To get to the pool, I walked to the front door, through the house, and out the back door. The pool is in our backyard. Second section, one, three, five, point zero, four, six, doesn't even say that pools and decks are prohibited in the front yard. The closest section, one, five, three, point oh, four, six, comes to saying this is subsection B, paragraph two, A, which says, no accessory use shall be located in any yard near to any public right-of-way than the closest wall of the principal building. The closest right-of-way is Country View. Meaning on Google Earth, measuring on Google Earth, my house is about ninety-five feet from Country View. The deck that surrounds the pool is about a hundred and eighty-five feet from Country View. My house is about four hundred and sixty-five feet from Dopey Lane. The pool is about five hundred feet from Dopey Lane. As to violation five, I believe the city inspector is inquiring that a perfectly good pool and deck be destroyed for a violation that doesn't exist of a rule that doesn't exist. I don't think any of the citizens of Lassure would benefit from this. Violation three says that my pool and deck are illegal because I do not have a permit. I've already addressed the lack of the pool permit. As to the lack of the permit for the deck, the city specifically told me that I would not need a permit for a deck so long as the deck was not attached to the house. The deck is not attached to the house. I constructed the deck so as to comply with city advice. Violation number two says that I am illegally operating a home occupation. I enjoy restoring classic cars. I have personal equipment for doing this, and I do it in my shed on my property as I am allowed to do. I have occasionally performed restoration work for friends, and I have occasionally taken money for this. I do not believe this amounts to a home occupation. I would like to note that this activity was never a problem for the city until the issues that came up in violation one, which I'll discuss next. Violation number one is for occupying a house with certi- uh, without a certificate of occupancy. I am surprised that nothing in the February tenth, two thousand twenty-two notice says anything about the windows in my house, since the windows have been the central issue between me and the city inspector. Of course, I cannot read the inspector's mind, but I believe all of these violations stem from the inspector's incorrect application of the city of state codes. Most of my complications with the inspector has been regarding the windows and him insisting that I now remove enough siding and sheetrock from the incomplete house as so as to allow the interior of the windows to be visi- visually inspected. This, of course, will be expensive, and I believe it will permanently damage the windows themselves. More importantly, I do not believe that the city has any legal basis to withhold a permit because of a window. The city's inspection record form does not include a sign-off for windows. The Minnesota Building Code, one, one, three, zero, zero, point, zero, two, one, zero, lists required inspections. Windows does not appear on that list. In trying to work through the window issue with the city, I pointed out that there is no time on the inspection record for windows. The city administrator on March fourth, twenty twenty-two responded that windows are included in framing. I then pointed out that framing was signed off on August twenty-first, twenty twenty. The inspector's actions show that he considers the windows to be part of framing. The inspector inspected the windows at the August twenty-first, twenty twenty framing inspection. The city inspector said to use a different type of tape and to shim the windows. But even having note, noted this issue with the windows, the inspector signed off the inspection for framing. Even though the windows are signed off as part of the framing, I followed the instructor, the instructor's advice and completed and shim, the shimming and taping by August twenty-third, twenty twenty. Because the August twenty-first, twenty twenty framing inspection included the windows and was signed off on, I did not believe that the windows needed further inspection or sign, or s- sign off. I would like specific directions as to this issue. Are windows included in the framing or not? If they are included in the framing, then why do I still need them inspected if the inspector signed off on the framing? If windows are not included in framing, then where on the inspections records form does it say I need a window inspection for a COO? I relied on the sign-off and continued construction. The insulation was inspected and passed on September eighteenth, twenty twenty. I then began siding. In October of twenty twenty, the city inspector began telling me I needed to remove all the siding so I could inspect, so he could inspect all the windows. I believe this is where the fight with the inspector began. I believe then, and I believe now, that I had a right to rely on the city and that once the inspector was, w- once the inspection was signed off, I could proceed with the next phase of the construction. On December, on December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, there was an inspection for temporary occupancy. The building inspector refused our permit because he believed we were already living in the property. We were not. We had already moved much of our property into the home because we were closing on our old house on December thirty-first, but we were not living there. I invited the inspector to look in the bedrooms to see any evidence of the house being lived in. Building one home and selling another is a complicated process. We expected to be treated fairly, and we expected the city inspector to use common sense and issue a temporary COO. When he did not, we had no other practical choice than to move into the house without a COO, which was only being withheld for a non-issue of the windows and the building inspector's assumption that we were already living in the house. I believe I have worked with the city reasonably to put the window issue at rest, even though it does not appear on the inspection record form. In all of my efforts, I have done my best, best to avoid tearing out the siding and other work I have done. I believe this is unnecessary, destructive, and costly. I have twenty-six pictures of windows to show how they are installed, and I provided these to the city. My home was blower tested on December twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. It passed with no windows or doors leaks or door leaks noted. On February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, an unlawful occupancy notice was posted on my front door. I spoke to the inspector, who told me I was a shitty builder, and that he felt that the, that felt bad for anyone who purchased a home built by me. Comments like this caused me to believe that the inspector's actions are about something other than enforcement of the code. In June of twenty twenty-one, I asked the inspector if an inspection from Marvin, the manufacturer of the windows, would be helpful. The inspector said if Marj- Marvin would affirm that the windows were installed according to Marvin's specifications, then the inspector could issue a temporary COO. On June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, Marvin Window Territory Manager, Tim Stock came and inspected the windows. He sent a report to the inspector. The inspector said he still would not issue us a COO. On June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, I spoke with Minnesota State Building Inspector Scott Wheeler. Mr. Wheeler said that if I met all safety codes, I should be you, issued a temporary COO. On June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, I met with the city administrator to resolve the situation. I left that meeting, understanding that I could uncover one of the small windows for inspection and that this inspection would resolve the issue. I removed the sheetrock from one window. When the inspector arrived, he said that he got to pick which window to inspect. He insisted that I tear out the large picture window, and I refused. In addition to being in an area where I would le- least want to tear out my window for no reason, the window is bigger than I could lift on my own. Maybe the inspector had a valid reason for needing to see the biggest window in the house torn out. But it seemed to me he was selecting the window that would be most difficult to deal with. I again asked for a temporary COO, and he again refused. He specifically said it was because I was already living in the house. In short, as to violation number one, living in the home without a COO, I do not believe there is a valid reason in withholding the COO. I sold my old house on a time, timeline that would allow the new house to pass inspection in time for me to move in. All builders and property owners have similar real-life things they need to plan around. To plan correctly, we need to know that the ci- city will treat us fairly and reasonably. I understand that the city is considering hiring attorney to sue me for the code violations. From the violations themselves, it appears that the city is going to spend money on legal fees to get me to destroy a perfectly good deck and pool, and to make sure that a perfectly good home sits empty. That is why I have hired my own attorney to protect my rights. I do not believe that the legal expense of a lawsuit will help the people of Lassure. So I offer the following solution. I will pay the fifteen hundred dollars assessed fees even for the pool and deck, which I think are inappropriate. In exchange, I ask that the certificate of occupancy be issued and that I not be required to tear out my pool, deck, siding, sheetrock, and windows. That I be issued a permit for the pool, and it be acknowledged that I do not need a permit for the deck. This would not mean that the city would be giving up and enforcing its code. It would mean acknowledging that the administration said that the windows are included in framing and that the framing has already been signed off. Acknowledging that homeowners can rely on what the inspector says. In this case, that a floating deck does not require a permit and that the pool and deck are in the backyard, not the front yard. I believe this solution without a lawsuit is in the interest of the city and the people and the property owners of Lassure. If you are interested in a settlement, as I have suggested, or if you need additional information, I ask that you work with our attorney whose contact information you have. Thank you kindly for, for listening.
Thank you, Gail. Thank you, Jim. I appreciate, uh, your comments, and I do agree with you on a couple of things. Uh, you want to be treated fairly. I think we've been extremely fair with you. I've had an opportunity to meet with you alone, Jim. I've had an opportunity to meet with you and the city administrator. Um, and secondly, I, I, I agree with you also. I want a resolution to this also. And, um, I, I think we've invested a lot of time and resources in, into this, not only you have, but so have, so have we as a city. And, and I think it's, it's getting to the point to getting to the point to where we, we can't find common ground. So you've got legal representation here. We have talked to our city, uh, attorney also. And, and it, everything indicates from my visiting with, uh, city staff and, and the rest of the council that this, this might be the best resolution, is just to, to kind of depend on whatever type of legal counsel we can to, to, to proceed ahead. So with that, I'll entertain any type of discussion from the rest of the council if you wish, questions? Anything? With that, uh, I will entertain, uh, any motions. The, uh, requested actions to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero seventeen, authorizing legal counsel pursue resolution, Lassure City Code and Minnesota State Building Code violations at four nineteen Coventry or com- Country View Lane through civil injunction proceedings. We have a motion to, to go forth with that.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Schleter. Do we have a second? I'll second that. Any other, uh, comments, questions, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to our next agenda item. And that would be regular agenda item six C, approved finance, uh, department support contract with, uh, Abdo. Do you want to share that with us, Mr.?
Yeah, I'll, thank you, Mayor Kirby, members of council. Actually going to have Joe. Joe's kind of led the, the front with this and, and securing, um, potentially securing these services from Abdo, which they did go through a rebranding exercise. They were AEM workforce solutions, or financial solutions, actually, this group was. So they've kind of done an umbrella, um, marketing, uh, rebranding, so new name, same people. So I'll, I'll hand it off to Joe, and he can speak a little bit about this.
Sure. Thank you, Administrator Krugel, uh, mayor, members of council. Given the council's action, um, earlier this month in appointing an interim city administrator, uh, for the city, uh, following Mr. Krugel's departure, uh, the first week of April, um, the, uh, staff have pursued, um, uh, some temporary support and assistance, uh, for the finance department at the city. As you're aware, the current finance, uh, staff at the city consists of myself. Finance director, uh, and, uh, Sally Jerner, our utility billing coordinator, uh, which is a full-time, uh, one-point-O FTE. Um, in the past, um, the city, um, um, has utilized Abdo, again, formerly Abdo Ike Myers, uh, for finance support, uh, specifically from twenty-fourteen through twenty nineteen, when the city, um, uh, utilized, uh, this firm for, uh, its finance director position. Uh, ultimately culminating in the layering of, uh, Zach Dowd, my predecessor, um, who was a contract employee with Abdo uh, up until, uh, twenty nineteen. Um, so, uh, what we have in front of you today is a proposal from Abdo to provide, um, interim finance director support to the city. So, um, so I can focus on city administrator responsibilities, uh, while city council, um, completes its search for a permanent, uh, city administrator. Uh, the agreement with Abdo would, uh, provide actually two separate individuals, uh, to provide varying levels of, uh, support for, uh, director ta- director level tasks, uh, from, um, daily tasks, accounts receivable, accounts payable, uh, reconciling bank accounts and cash investments, um, as well as, um, providing uh, support for, uh, council reports, ad hoc reports, uh, working with staff and, uh, budget, um, and, um, budget projections, forecasting, things like that. As well as kicking off the, or preparing the city to, uh, to begin budget discussions, um, near the end of May, uh, into June. as well as kicking off the or preparing the city to to begin budget discussions near the end of May into June. The proposal we have from Abdo would run effectively from now through the end of May with the option to extend that should the city require it at the time. The request from city staff was that we would have an individual, one of these two individuals onsite at least once a week to be able to work hands on with staff, realizing that the bulk of the responsibilities could be done remotely. The proposal from Abdo would be eight thousand nine hundred dollars per month for two months, again, running through May thirty-first. And they've outlined all the levels of support that they would be able to provide. In discussing this with Administrator Krugel, we feel that that certainly satisfies the requirements that the city has put forth for this, covering for this position. In the meantime, as you're all aware, the auditors will be onsite for their annual audit, the first week of May, which falls right in the window here. Abdo will be able to provide support for that. How they typically handle audit when they provide services for cities is at an hourly rate. So it's it's typical for them to provide all the day-to-day operational support from the finance director position. When it comes to audit time, they build that out separately at an hourly rate. My hope is that I will be able to be the continue to be the primary contact for the auditors and manage the audit myself. If I need to pull in additional assistance through Abdo, this agreement would allow me to do so. Are there any questions?
I have none. Any other council member have any questions? Mr. Roby, we appreciate all your work and you're going to be juggling a little bit here in these next few weeks to a month or so, so we wish you well with that. I think this Abdo is a great resource, not only for you, but also for the city. So we're in full support for you.
Thank you.
I have no disagreement with it. I just thought it deserved a little more discussion than just being on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
And just so it's clear, you mentioned that Scott made me think of one other thing. So currently Sally Durner reports to me, utility billing reports through me. That would not change this. The individuals who support the finance department would not have any direct reports. Sally would continue to report to me on an interim basis.
So.
Mayor Kirby, I'd make a motion to approve this item.
Thank you. Councilmember Sullivan's made a motion to approve the finance department support contract with Abdo. Thank you, Mr. Schleter. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Anybody opposed? The eyes have it. Thank you, Mr. Roby.
Thank you.
Last item, I believe, is item six D, consider promotion to sergeant, and that is sergeant.
Josh Gladys.
Thank you.
So I have sent out, we call this a green sheet item. Actually, Joe sent it out to the city council regarding this internal promotion. Our current sergeant, I think he's still considered current, has resigned. He got a different job at a different police agency. So there was a vacancy. That vacancy was posted internally. We received two applicants. And Josh Gladys rose to the top of that interview process. There's been an offer that's been made to him. That offer is included in the packet, the piece of paper that you are looking at right now, consistent with the newly adopted L E L S agreement that that we have for sergeants. And this will be effective April first, two thousand twenty-two, so Josh would roll into that position on April first. And we have a motion, requested action of a motion to approve the hiring of Josh Gladys as police sergeant effective April first, two thousand twenty-two, with the terms described in the offer letter. So I'll entertain any questions. Joe can entertain any questions as well, if you have any.
Anybody, any questions at all regarding Officer Gladys? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I fully approve this.
Thank you, Councilmember Huntington. It's been seconded by Councilmember Sullivan. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? The eyes have it. Moving on to comments, reports, items of appreciation. Councilmembers, this is your opportunity to share what's going on in the community. We'll start with Councilmember Huntington.
Thank you, sir. I understand this is Jasper's last meeting.
It is.
It is. And of my tenure at city council, I made a few mistakes, but maybe one of them was not going for even hiring you. So I think you've done a great job. Hope you forgive me for that. Saturday, we had the city forum. I thought it went pretty well. I thought we hadn't had people there. I walked around a lot to see what what people were talking about in those breakout sessions. It seems like pretty pretty good, I think. Then lastly, my meeting for RPAC for April has been canceled due to lack of substance, according to it's gotten shorter. And that is about it.
Thank you, Councilmember Huntington. Moving on to Councilmember Krogman.
Let's begin with the city of the state of the city, future of the city forum. I certainly want to thank the citizens of Lassure who came out and participated in that and thank the Planning Commission for presenting it. It was a worthwhile thing for us to do. And Mark, I agree with you. I think it'd be, it was well done. And I think it will be helpful to our city. Also, of course, want to thank Jasper for his service. I'm hoping we have some other way to say goodbye to you other than just this way. But we do thank you for your your service to the city. And we look forward to the best for you and your family in the future. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schleter.
Since the last regular council meeting, did have a H R A meeting on the sixteenth, nothing significant to report on that. I also want to thank Planning Chair Dan Ryerson, Planning Commission Members, City Staff and High School for hosting the first Future of the City Forum. I also thought it went very well. Also, thank you Administrator Krugel for your accomplishments here and best wishes in your new position. Activity coming up on Wednesday, there's a Lassure Colonial Officials Meeting in Killkenny. County Assessor Shane Bender is going to be the guest speaker. I will be attending unless there's an ice storm.
Thank you. And lastly, Councilmember Sullivan.
Just had an E D A meeting tonight. We got an update from Cambria on the land one one sixty-nine. Hopefully we see some progress moving forward with that. Got an update from the theater people, Katie Elke, Katie Elke, Ketner and Jim Gulf Rensen. Just giving us an update on where they're at, what they're doing, involvement with the historical societies and seeing where they're going with that. And we did approve a facade loan or revolving loan fund for the Maven House. And then also we approved another loan for Luke's Cafe. Other than that, it was pretty normal meeting. Would like to say thank you to Jasper. It's been a pleasure getting to know you. Thank you for what you've done for our community. I think unfortunately, I don't think you get the credit that you deserve. We've gone come a long ways just since you've come to town. So good luck with your future endeavors and hope you stay in touch.
I'm going to close with the same. I want to thank you for everything you've done for the city, Jasper Krugel. Your 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 insight, your 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 vision, your guidance, your leadership, it's all been outstanding and we appreciate everything. What I'm not going to miss is mixing your name up with the gentleman to my left, Krogman and Krugel. Interim Administrator Roby, I think it'll be a little easier to say Roby and then ship this way a little easier, but I again, thank you for everything. It's it's meant a lot to us all and I want to wish you well as as you move ahead. So with that, we'll let you close with any comments.
Yeah, I don't have much. Thank you, everybody, for, you know, allowing me to work here with you beside you and we have gotten a lot of stuff done. You know, bittersweet.
All right, we're going to miss you. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor?
Hi.